Commissioner Flicker. Commissioner Britton.
Here.
Commissioner Arossi.
Here.
Commissioner Sheard.
Here.
Commissioner Helen.
Here.
Commissioner Jenkins.
Here.
Chairperson Derling.
Here. Thank you. Would you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Thank you. This is the time that if anyone has something they want to bring forward to the planning commissions, not on the agenda. They're welcome to do so. Commissioners can't take action on it. About the most we could do would be refer it to staff. But now's the time to do that. Seeing none. Also, those who want to speak, if you can fill out the blue cards and give them to the clerk. So we can be kind of... Do you have any? Did you have any?
I do not have any cards.
Yeah.
I do not have any cards.
Yeah, if you guys who want to speak can fill out a card. That way we can keep things in order. Okay, the next item is the approval of the minutes. Anybody have any changes, comments on the minutes of the May 27th and July 22nd meeting? And the motion needs to carry for both of those. Hear a motion from someone?
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Both?
Both minutes?
Yeah, there's two sets of minutes.
Yes, I make a motion to approve both sets of minutes.
Okay. You have a second?
No second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments? Take the vote.
Even when you hit it?
I do it?
There it goes.
There we go.
Yeah?
Anyone want to change the vote?
Well, Glenn hasn't.
I'm trying to, won't let me.
His is changing mine.
You got it? Yeah.
I don't know.
Mine's not working.
Was it maybe that one?
No, because watch, I'll hit yes and it'll take, it takes yours away. Huh.
Thank you. Are we still trying to get the vote in? If it doesn't work, we can take it verbally.
Okay.
Call a, call a roll for the vote.
Okay. Commissioner Britton?
Yes.
Commissioner Arossi?
Yes.
Commissioner Sheard?
Yes.
Commissioner Helen?
Yes.
Commissioner Jenkins?
Yes.
Chairperson Derling?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Now, if we continue to have that problem, we'll have to do all the voting by verbal just like that. So just heads up everybody for that. Okay, public hearings. Open the meeting for public hearings. On each item, the staff will make a presentation and then...
There's the presentations. The presentations.
Oh, I forgot to mention. Item two, we're moving toward the end of the calendar.
Yes, Commissioners, Ron Belser, who is our code enforcement officer, had a personal conflict. He should be here between 6:30 and 6:45. So he'll, he'll present at that time.
And I'll be notified when he arrives and, and whatever item we're on, at the finish of that item, will go to him. So, thanks. Anyway, the... We'll open the public hearing. Staff will give a presentation. Commissioners can ask staff questions or back and forth. Then I'll open the hearing for the item. And we'll hear comments from applicants or whomever. And I'll take each item in turn. Okay. Item three. Zoning change 21-03 Mobile Home, Mobile Manufactured Home Code Amendments. Open the hearing for that.
Commissioners, if, if it's all right with the Commissioners, we'd like to move forward with the projects where there's applicants here and then take on item three, the Mobile Home Manufactured Code, after that, if, if that's acceptable to the Commissioners.
I think I had that on the notes here. I missed it. Okay. So is that all right for the Commissioners?
Yeah.
Yep.
So we'll move on. Item three, item two and three moved toward the end of the agenda. And item three would be the last on the agenda, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Okay, item four, side and glance parcel. Rezone to M2 and general plan amendment. Staff?
Yes, Commissioners. We are expecting Ken Noack and/or one of the side and glances to be here to represent the applicant in this case, and we don't see them yet on Zoom. So with your permission, can we move directly to item five?
Is that all right with the Commissioners?
Yes.
Okay, good. Item five then is a minor use permit, UP 2107, for alcohol sales at the proposed Villavino, Villavino Wine Bar and Tasting Room. Staff?
Good evening, Commissioners. Connor Musler, Assistant Planner. This item is a minor use permit for alcohol sales at Villavino, a proposed wine bar and tasting room at 1440 Meyer Street, Suite A. The proposed wine bar is located in the Prospectors Mini Mall in the former Butte County Wine Company suite. The applicant Candy Knoth purchased the wine bar from the previous owner of the Butte County Wine Company and is looking to rebrand and open with local and international wines, a small selection of beer, and locally sourced charcuterie for onsite consumption. The applicant is applying for an ABC Type 42 license to allow beer and wine for onsite consumption. A Type 42 license does not permit minors to enter or remain on premise, with the exception for musicians per the California Business and Professions Code, Section 25663.5. ABC has provided notice that there is an over-concentration of licenses within Census Track 28. As such, a letter of public convenience or necessity is required, which is included in staff's recommendation. The required findings for planning commission to make for an alcohol license are within your staff report and the resolution. Staff recommends approval on this item.
Any questions, or staff? Open the public hearing for this if the applicant wishes to make a presentation.
Good evening. Some of you I got to speak with last time I was here. I just wanted to come to answer any questions that you might have about the type of establishment, hours of operation, any other questions that you might have regarding the business.
Any questions? I had one on the wine. Are you bringing wine from other countries?
There will be some international wines.
And do you know which countries, Barney?
Italy.
Yeah, okay. I'm Italian.
I got you.
What are your hours of operation?
Thus far, because I do have a full-time day job. It will be open at four, from four to eight, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday probably from 12 to eight or nine, depending. So it's not a late night, all-night eating establishment-type thing, but just an alternative to some of the other things we have going on downtown. Very beautifully decorated, classy, classic, Italian style. I think it would be a really nice addition to downtown, and it's very different from the last one that was there.
Any further questions of the applicant? Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? Approve the public hearing, turn it over to the Commissioners. Discussion and motion.
I have... I mean, knowing where this property is, right down the block is the kids' daytime...
The Axiom.
The Axiom, yeah. Now, what is the distance between the Axiom and this?
The Axiom does fall within that 500-foot radius. It's the next suite over, so it is fairly close. Don't have an exact number.
And refresh my memory on that rule?
So we have to take note of those kinds of uses within 500 feet. So residences, parks, schools, houses of worship. That is within finding number one. ABC won't deny a alcohol license if it is within that 500 feet. It's just a, a formal noticing for the decision body to, to make. That there is an acknowledgement, there is a daycare, a school, something within that 500-foot radius.
Children don't go in.
I, I understand that. We had, we, the Butte Wine Company...
Was worried about it.
Yeah, yeah.
Did they ever have any trouble?
Not that I know of. Anybody know of any trouble?
No.
Well, that was gonna be my question is, if a problem arises, a consistent problem, does it come back to the planning commission for review, or do they get fined, or how does that work?
It is possible that it could come back if it is a very consistent problem. So code enforcement would, of course, deal with it first.
Yes.
Since this is a use permit, those conditions of approval, if they aren't met, it can come back before the planning commission.
Okay, and then that could also then be appealed to the city council, whatever decision is made.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Any further discussion with the Commissioners?
Connor, do you know of any issues with the previous wine bar, with the Axiom, any?
Not that I know of. Again, that 500-foot public comment was mailed out to all property owners within that area. We haven't received any for or against for this project.
How late does the Axiom run, or say, open? Is this after school?
It primarily focuses on after-school functions, so probably from that three to six o'clock window. I don't know exact hours for them.
Okay. I was, I was here when we permitted the Axiom. The wine bar was there first, and the wine bar was worried, worried about the Axiom, Axiom coming in. And the Axiom agreed to come in, knowing that the wine bar was next door. So that was, that was on the first one, just to let everybody know it wasn't here. Yeah.
Any other questions or discussion? Ready for a motion?
I'll motion to approve item five as presented.
You have a second somewhere?
I'll second.
Okay, we now have a motion and a second. We're gonna try it.
It works.
See if it works.
Nope.
They can't vote. You guys just gotta coordinate. Oh, okay.
Okay.
We have to do it.
Oh, no. Okay. Okay. And I'm just gonna call the last names. Britton?
Yes.
Arossi?
Yes.
Sheard?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Derling?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And for the rest of the meetings, why don't we just go right into the roll call for the motion rather than go through this process, okay? Great, thanks. All right, move to item six. Item six, another minor use permit, UP 21-08, to allow FXP firearms to conduct sales, firearms, ammunition, et cetera, at 2122 Fifth Avenue. Staff?
This item is a minor use permit for FXP firearms to relocate from 1940 Feather River Boulevard, Suite A, to 2122 Fifth Avenue. The planning commission previously approved a minor use permit for the sale of firearms, ammunition, firearm accessories, and gun repair services at their Feather River Boulevard location on June 24th, 2013. City code does not specifically mention the sale of firearms and ammunition as an allowed use. However, at the June 24th, 2013 Planning Commission meeting, the zoning administrator made findings classifying gun sales and repair as an equivalent land use to personal services moderate impact and repair services, small appliances. As such, it has been determined that a gun shop isn't allowed use, subject to a use permit. The applicant intends to offer the same services and products that they currently offer at their Feather River Boulevard location. A security plan was prepared in accordance with OMC 17.12.100. The security plan addresses the storage of guns and ammunition, security system in use, and the display of merchandise during business hours. In addition, the property owner, Cole Garcia, has submitted a letter of support that has been handed out to you separately. Staff recommends approval on this item.
Any questions, or staff?
Mr. Chairman, Glenn, Commissioner Arossi has recused himself because his property is involved with the management of, and of the property, so.
Thank you. And we still haven't enough, we still have a quorum, so. I had a question, or staff? What does this mean?
That is the support letter from the property owner.
But on the back, it says in favor. What, what does that mean?
So we had received that email from Cole, the property owner, this afternoon, saying he's in support of the project. This was the public hearing notice that was mailed out to all property owners, so he submitted it back as an in favor of the project. Yes, this is the only one we have received.
But when it says in favor on the back, it's referring only to the one person. There's not a list somewhere of...
No, that is just the one person that is in favor.
Okay. Any other questions, or staff?
Why are they moving, do you know?
It's a good question for the applicants.
Yeah, we can get the applicant. Okay. Open the public hearing. We can hear from the applicant.
Thank you. Moving because it's a much nicer location, and I think the exposure there is gonna be a whole lot better for me. And it's actually a bigger location also, so I'll be able to expand and hopefully offer some better product.
Thank you.
All right? Thank you.
Any questions of the applicant? It's pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Huh?
Pretty straightforward?
Yeah, okay. Close the public hearing, turn it over to the Commissioners for a motion and a second.
I motion to approve item six as presented.
I second that motion.
Call the roll, please.
Britton?
Yes.
Sheard?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Derling?
Yes.
Motion carries with five yeses and one recusal.
Thank you. Okay. We'll go into item seven. Wait till our other commissioner gets back here. Item seven is a minor use permit, UP 21-09, to allow operation of a tattoo parlor at 2030 Bird Street. Staff?
Yes, this item is a minor use permit for a tattoo parlor. The applicant, Chris Earl, is looking to open Traveler's Tattoo in a 1,200-square-foot shop space at 2030 Bird Street. The building has been vacant for some time, with the last tenant occupying the space in 2005, 2006. Since then, the building has been renovated by the property owner. The property is zoned downtown mixed-use. According to the Oroville Municipal Code, tattoo parlors are classified as a personal service moderate impact, which requires a use permit in an MXD zone. Staff have identified one tattoo parlor with an active business license, Voodoo Tattoo, at 1374 Meyer Street, within the city limits. As previously mentioned, the tattoo parlor occupies roughly 1,200 square feet and has a small upstairs area the applicant intends to use as a drawing room. Staff recommends approval. Should the planning commission approve the use permit, the project has been conditioned to require the applicant to comply with all Butte County Public Health requirements and to supply any approvals and documentation from Public Health prior to occupancy.
Thank you. Any questions, or staff? I, I couldn't hear what the upstairs, is upstairs a residence, or what?
It's a, a small loft area the applicant intends to use to draw, make some designs for the tattoos they plan to offer.
Oh, okay, so downstairs, he does the work, and upstairs, he does the design?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, there, there is another tattoo parlor near restored. Is that one not have an active license? Is that why?
That one did not show up within our permit tracking system with an active license, so that's probably.
Okay, so just, I guess, for the record, there are already two, if we're listing them. Right, so there's the two, and this is the third.
The applicant is here.
Yeah, let me open the hearing.
If they would like to, yeah.
Okay, open the public hearing. I want to hear from the applicant.
I'm Chris Earl. This is my partner, Bush Felix. We're just here to answer any questions you have about, you know, our establishment coming in and everything. We're just trying to bring a, a different type of tattoo parlor downtown. We got guests coming from around the world to tattoo here once in a while and stuff like that. All our friends are into fishing and stuff like that, so it's a perfect location for everybody and everything, so. That's all we have.
So what are the differences from, from other parlors?
Artist.
Bring people from around the world?
The artist, and we just, we just look at it different. We'll say, we'll say that. We look at it.
If I could say anything, it would be more like a upscale type of tattoo environment. A lot of people from Chris Earl throwing the tattoo conventions at the Feather Falls Casino kinda like link up with artists that traveled there, and now they'd like to travel and experience Oroville, like the fishing and all of the nature-type stuff, you know? So that's why we're calling it Travelers. People are traveling into town to kinda present like a more... Upscale is the best way I could say, like talented artists from around the world are gonna come to, you know, kinda cater to Oroville, you know? Because the convention's so well, so it, it's so good, so to speak. People wanna keep coming back. They wanna stay longer, you know, to, to tattoo more people. Because at the convention, just being the weekend, it, you know, there's more people than we could tattoo, you know? So that's kinda why we wanna open up down here.
Well, eventually, you'll have the International Conference of Tattoo Artists from around the world.
We already do.
Yeah.
Already do at Feather Falls.
Yeah, that's the difference from a normal walk-in tattoo shop, more or less. Like, we're gonna present, like people are coming to town next week or next month, so people can look at their work and kind of contact them and have, like, larger-scale designs prepared for them.
And we have the Oroville Convention Center. You could...
Actually...
I mean, actually, I'd love to see things right in town.
So actually, I've already made a deal with Feather Falls that next year, we're doing a walk-up weekend at the convention, at the Feather Falls Casino, March 5th, 6th, and 7th. And then October 1st, 2nd, 3rd, we wanna do the actual Feather Falls Tattoo Convention at the YMCA building.
Wonderful. Thank you.
So, yeah, we bring about 5,000 to 8,000 people a year to Feather Falls.
Awesome. No, that would be great.
Yeah. That's our plan.
That's kinda where I was hoping you'd talk about.
That's it, yeah.
Any other questions of the applicant?
I do. You're in the downtown historical region. So do you plan on changing the facade of the building, or?
Not at all. We had it, we had the windows actually hand-painted by a gentleman out of Santa Cruz, and he did them actually a kinda time-period correct to the, to what it would be.
Yeah.
Great.
Okay.
Yeah.
And it's open regular hours, or it's 12 to 8, so it's open those hours? So people can look in and see something happening, and wonderful.
Any other questions of the applicant? Thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
Approve the public hearing and turn it over to the Commissioners for discussion or comment. And ready for a motion in a second.
I'm kinda excited for, I mean, if they can bring, if they can bring in that many people for a three or four-day period. I mean...
Well, it's, it's, I, I knew about, that's why I wanted to make sure that they brought that up.
Yeah.
Because it could, like in San Francisco and San Diego, they have conventions. And, you know, you can bring in 1,000 people or 500 people or whatever.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm fine for it, yeah.
It's a little different to type of tattoo parlor in that respect. Any other discussion?
No, I think it looks good, the outside of the building. You did a nice job on the, on the front facade. Really cleaned it up. Looks real good. Yeah, looks very good.
Us historic freaks like myself really appreciate that. Okay, ready for a motion in a second?
I make a motion to approve the minor use permit, UP 21-09, to allow the operation of a tattoo parlor at 2030 Bird Street.
I second.
Hey, we have a motion and a second. Call the roll.
Britton?
Yes.
Arossi?
Yes.
Sheard?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Derling?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, go to item seven. I'm not seven, but moved item two and item three. Is, is it Ron Bels, Belson, Belser?
Ron has not arrived yet.
Have you tried to reach him on his phone, or?
No, he'll be here before 6:45, so we don't have any other folks on Zoom, but I would suggest that we go ahead and, and take up item four, if that's all right, and then move to item two and interrupt that for Mr. Belser.
Okay, ready for item four then?
Yes, Commissioners, this is the side and glance parcel at 1245 Orodam Boulevard. And this commission discussed this item last month and asked that a conditional overlay limiting the types of uses at this site be developed because of its, its frontage along Orodam Boulevard, SR 162. So the project before you is to rezone this 39-acre parcel to intensive manufacturing M2 from corridor mixed-use. And applicant is requesting this change because of an e-commerce client.
Say that again, Wes, the last part.
The applicants have an e-commerce prospect, which would be a warehouse fulfillment center. Companies like Amazon and others do warehouses to, for fulfillment at various locations, and they have a prospect, e-commerce prospect for this. So one of the requirements of this prospect is to rezone to manufacturing use because manufacturing is not allowed in MXC zone.
Okay, they have a prospect.
Or warehousing is not. Or warehousing is not allowed.
But if the prospect falls through and we, we zone that as M X, then what's the ramifications of that?
Uh, it is, it would then be zoned M two, uh, and I remind the Commissioners that this is a recommendation to the City Council, uh, that you would be making. Uh, if it's zoned M two, then warehouse uses would be allowed, and, um, the maximum height of a structure would be sixty-five feet instead of the, I'm, I'm looking for my actual staff report, I think I put it in the wrong place, but, um...
Forty, I don't know the conditions.
Yeah, forty.
Page forty, I think.
Forty-five feet, I believe, and, um, the lot coverage maximum is forty percent in, under manufacturing, and it's, uh, one point zero F A R under M X C, which means that they could put a multi-story building in. Yeah, thanks, put a multi-story building in that, uh, was thirty-nine acres worth of, of floor space. The applicant had requested back in two thousand and seventeen that this be rezoned to M two, and that was long before they had this, this prospect in hand, uh, so they are, are hoping to have a manufacturing, um, use here or a series of manufacturing uses. Can you go to the overhead aerial? So here is the site, uh, the existing building there is the tire building and the U-Haul, and, uh, then there's a bunch of other buildings on the site.
Isn't a recycle site there?
There is a recycling use as well, and, so the, the parcel immediately to the south is owned and operated by the Shiflett Brothers, and that is zoned M two, um, and then there's rail immediately to the east going north and south along the edge of the site. This site originally was a lumber mill and has long since not been a lumber mill, so it has a history, long history of industrial uses. The commission, at its last meeting, asked for certain limitations to be imposed onto the site if it was rezoned M two, and the vehicle for that is a conditional overlay, and on page forty of your packet are the, uh, recommended conditions for this, uh, parcel, should it be, uh, zoned M two. And so that, that involves setting back any tall buildings, at least a hundred feet from the top of the ridge, and we note that the existing tire, uh, store that's there, if you can go to the, uh, street view, is visible from S R one sixty-two, that's it on the left there with the two peaks, and that is set back a hundred feet from the, uh, ridge. So the, uh, any new buildings would be set back the same distance from that existing building. All buildings, uh, would also be fully screened from S R one sixty-two unless the design was such that it looked really attractive from, uh, the street, and that would be up to the Planning Commission to make that determination. Uh, any potential nuisance generating uses such as log decks or asphalt plants or any other uses that are typically allowed in an M two zone would now require a use permit instead of being allowed uses, so, so any proposed use like that would come before the Planning Commission for approval, uh, and that would include, uh, any warehousing or any other distribution that involves significant truck traffic. That we would require a, a traffic analysis and, uh, potentially, uh, significant redevelopment of the access roads that are there onto the site.
So that fall, that falls under truck traffic, so like, if, just say, P C P wanted to build a, uh, big warehouse there, that would fall under the, to store, all their canned goods, that would fall under the truck traffic rule, and it would come before the commission?
Uh, yes, it would have to generate significant truck traffic, um, and, uh, we don't have a number, uh, defined for that, but, uh, staff would look at whatever proposal came in and determine whether or not.
Understood, understood, but that's seasonal, so if you take an average, right, that would probably fall under that.
Yes, we would look at peak traffic and that, and determine significance based on what the peak traffic flow would be, uh, to avoid congestion.
I, I, I mean, I, I've worked on that property for several years. Used, used to be Lost Plumas Lumber, before that it was a, a, a sawmill, and, um, I know a lot of history about that property and other properties around it. Uh, I just don't wanna see that come back, you know, if they, they have potential for an e-commerce, but if the potential falls out, then we have to have some rules and regs set for that, right?
Yes, and that's what, what these, uh, six conditions are, uh, intended to, uh, limit, uses like that, like a sawmill, uh, would not be allowed to come back, a log deck would not be allowed to be put there on the site, uh, not without a use permit, without coming before this Planning Commission to, to look at it. And then, any development would, we would require full frontage improvements along the front of the, the property as well. Uh, as you know, there's, there's no sidewalks or, uh, other easy access, it's just a, a wide asphalt berm there, and so we would require the, the frontage to be developed and landscaped and, and, uh, make it a nice amenity, uh, for folks traveling on the, on the highway.
What about the drainage of the property? Because I know that most of that drains to the west, which there's a creek on that adjacent property which runs south. I mean, do we have any control over that?
Yes, any proposal that, for development that comes in, uh, part of the review is by the city engineer, and, uh, we do require civil drawings that show, uh, drainage off the site, uh, we would, uh, look at it, and if it was excessive or if it was going in the wrong direction, we would require changes, and, uh, some of the most recent projects are putting underground, uh, storage, stormwater storage, uh, in as part of their projects. The Hampton Inn is doing that, for instance.
You mean rather than a pond or something?
Rather than a pond, yeah.
Yeah.
A retention pond.
So the applicant has looked at these proposed conditions and is fine with them as well, uh, they're not here at the moment to weigh in, but, uh, but they're fine with these conditions. And the, the table, um, that's attached and on page forty-three, the, the four changes to the table would, would change from permitted uses to a use permit requirement for, uh, any manufacturing more than forty thousand square feet, uh, for any metalwork more than forty thousand square feet, any outdoor storage more than five hundred square feet, and any recycling, uh, facility or center. So we're, we're trying to, uh, follow the Planning Commission's direction here and, um, limit nuisance type activities, uh, in the future at this site. If there is significant, regarding truck traffic, Commissioner Britton, I do have to mention that, uh, one of the options that we have discussed with the applicant, uh, several times is that we would ask if there's significant truck traffic for them to develop an access to the rear of the property, uh, through the Shiflett property, uh, over to, to Cal Oak, so, or State Box Road, I'm sorry, so that, uh, the, any, uh, distribution traffic would then be channeled down through the industrial area as opposed to the highway.
And is the, is the adjacent property owner okay with that?
We haven't talked to them about that, but there are no development proposals either at, at this time.
Because, yeah, cause, um, let's see, Lost Plumas, Diamond Match, you have to go through only one property, correct? Yeah, yeah.
But the, the other, um, circumstance on this is that S R one sixty-two is designated as a STA terminal route, S T A A, which is a Caltrans designation that allows heavy trucks to be, to transport materials from S R seventy to a terminal at this location. Uh, so, uh, we, we would be hard pressed to limit truck traffic if that was the only access way in.
I, I can remember when I worked there, uh, there would be lumber trucks lined up down the road to Miners Cafe, and that was consistent. It was in the A M, but, I, I mean, we were shipping forty to forty-five truck and trailers of material out of that every day.
Well, that's what we would, we would certainly try and avoid, and of course, uh, Caltrans would definitely be involved because it's a state, state highway, so, uh, their, their approval would also be required.
Any other questions of staff?
Yeah, Wes, would there be a way, if there was significant, we're talking semi-trucks, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
If there was a way that, um, their times can be limited, like they can't go between three and six during commute hours, they'd have to use the rear entrance?
Sorry, I've worked in manufacturing and shipping, and the shipping trucks usually come in the afternoon, it's a huge thing to try to schedule these big trucks.
Well, I didn't just make them use where they'd have to use that other road.
Yeah.
Even though it might be more convenient to use Oro Dam, if the other road is available, if we could keep them off of that road during heavy commute times, so you don't have the truck stacking.
Well, you, you, you can't even answer that question, cause nobody's talked to the, the adjacent property owner. You see what I'm saying? I, I mean, that's, that's just a, a shot in the dark.
Well, you can't force the adjacent property owner to, uh...
No, you can't.
Give them access.
...property in order to solve the problem, but he might wanna do it, but, but take a discussion, obviously, and agreement by the property owner.
Yes, it would be an early, early proposed condition and, and there would probably be some negotiation involved, um, in, in working out the details of that condition, and the city's position versus the applicant's position versus the, the landowner's, uh, position. So, uh, we would expect that, that negotiation to happen and ideally work out a resolution, um, satisfactory to all.
Is this something that we make conditioned upon that other ingress, egress point?
If there's heavy traffic?
Pardon me?
If there's heavy traffic, you mean?
Well, I mean, a lot of it hinges on...
Or just de facto.
...access from the other road, right?
Even with an e-commerce site, with an e-commerce, is this an issue?
Yeah.
It would be with the e-commerce site.
Okay.
So condition number four can be massaged by this commission, uh, to, to require, you know, rear access as opposed to just discussing rear access.
That, that'll come up, though, with the use permit, when, when somebody actually purchases a prop, the property, we don't need to condition that at this point, correct?
Correct.
Well, if you're conditioned that, uh, that road be required and the property owner doesn't agree, does that kill the, any uses or, or can the condition be worded such that, uh, best effort be made and if, I don't know, uh, I hate to have the whole project depend on, approval of the whole project depend on that road when there's no, uh, way to require the, the property owner to allow the road across the property.
Well, without, without a, a project, uh, description with a tr, traffic count and other types of things, then we're, we're basically kicking that can down the road until, till such time as, as we get an application.
Okay, you're saying that Shiflett Brothers owns the parcel south?
Yes.
Okay, and how far west does that parcel go? All the way to Fifth?
It, it goes to that drainage ditch you were talking about.
That's it.
The Shiflett parcel goes farther, uh, than, uh, than the side and glance parcel.
Okay, who owns the, the, the parcel west of Lost Plumas or whatever parcel it says, side and glass?
I don't know who, who owns that one.
Cause I, I, I'm just, I'm looking at, you know...
Putting a road in that way, yeah.
Is it possible to go that way?
Can you show the, uh, overhead again?
I think what's gonna happen is that, uh, we're gonna wait and see if a problem develops, and if a problem does develop, then the conditions need to be designed such that we can require whatever solution is required to solve the problem, and, uh, I don't know if the conditions, uh, read that way, I'm not really comfortable that, I don't know, uh, they can be interpreted that way, but, um, for example, uh, and maybe require them to, uh, put a, uh, a, a turning lane, cut into that bank and put a turning lane in, a stacking lane, uh, to get the trucks off the main...
Yes, that's, that's a, a common solution and, and Caltrans would weigh in on that and the whole process. Uh, the, the traffic analysis, uh, would look at the, the traffic, where it comes from, where it goes, uh, what const, what the makeup of the traffic is, and then whether the road has the capacity to do that, and if it causes congestion, uh, like Commissioner Britton is saying happened long ago, then yes, a right turn lane, uh, perhaps a signal, something like that, uh, might be, might be required a, as part of the development.
Does this property still have a spur on it? Yes.
I was told that the spur was removed.
Yeah.
The tracks are gone, but the right of way is still there.
The right of way is still there, uh, the spur does exist along one sixty-two, so part of it is still there, yeah.
Yeah.
That's a railway spur.
Wow.
Yeah, that was, that was to, uh, take lumber in and out and so forth, but I believe the railroad still has an easement there.
Okay.
Uh, so that they could, uh, I don't know.
Well, you used to come in, it used to come in right here, like that.
But that's gonna be, you could, based on the zoning, you can have some pretty heavy duty stuff going in there.
Yeah, you could.
Yes, you could, yeah.
It, it's, this is a big decision, Wes, right? And there's too many ifs for me, because I know, I mean, it's a big parcel, and they have a proposal for, uh, a company that may or may not use it, don't know, right? And then what happens after that? I mean, it, it's a great piece of property, I mean, it's a lot of manufacturing done on this piece, so it's a little scary to me to have this happening in the business district of Oroville, but on the other hand, I really don't wanna turn people away from, you know, developing something that can make Oroville grow, but we have to be really careful on what we accept. But we have to be really careful on what we accept. That's my point.
Is, is there anything that could go there that wouldn't require a use permit from the planning commission?
Uh, yes, in fact, uh, in the table that's there, starting on page 41, any of the uses in this table that has a P under the M2 column would not have to go to the planning commission for approval.
Yeah, I looked at those and most of them, I mean, there's nothing really untoward, uh, in terms of intensity or what we're talking about. There's a manufacturing, um, 10,000 square foot or less.
Mm-hmm, that's permitted.
Forty thousand.
Yeah. You don't need a use permit.
More than forty, forty thousand square feet would be.
Well, manufacturing.
So, you know, I don't have a, pretty much a problem. The only concern I have is the traffic and do we have the ability? Once this is approved, if it's approved and a traffic problem arises, it's, everybody recognizes it's pretty serious. Do we have the ability to solve the problem? And, uh, the way I read the conditions, uh, yeah, uh, they can be interpreted that we can solve the problem, but the state of California is going to have their foot in it too.
State of California is likely to be much more strict than the city would be with their highway.
Is this, is this property cleared for hazardous material?
Yeah, that's going to be my other question.
Cleared of hazardous material? Uh, there was a, uh, th- this was one of the properties that was, uh, looked at for the, the Brownfields grant that the city got quite a while ago. And, um, I don't know if it's cleared or not. If a proposal comes in, uh, to reuse the, the parcel, then that would be one of the biggest questions to be dealt with.
Yeah, cause I, I, I know it's been under the Brownsfield personally. And base, basically, uh, the only thing you can do at that point is pour concrete over it or remove it, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Those are your two options.
In all the discussions we've had, uh, this one has not come up as one that, that has a restricted uses, uh, for reuse or, or not. It's not, I don't think it's, it's limited by, uh, the Regional Water Quality Control Board, for instance, from redevelopment, like the Coppers site is, um, down south of, south of there.
But you don't know if it's been cleared or not.
I can certainly check into that and double check.
I would appreciate that.
Any other questions of staff?
Yeah, Wes, how often, I mean, if you get a lot of heavy truck traffic on there, I mean, how often is, uh, that part of Oro Dam repaved? Is that something that has to be, uh, worked out with Caltrans?
Yes.
I, to be honest with you, I don't think you can get anything heavier than what's gone on with the, the fires.
My point is that, you know, the road, the infrastructure is just deteriorating, but they don't seem to pave it or fix it. And, you know, we'd just be adding to it.
Commissioners, Dawn Nevers here. Hi, sorry to interrupt, but regarding the repaving of Oro Dam Boulevard that is scheduled to be completed or started in 2022, um, and so there will be sidewalks, uh, completed all along Oro Dam from Highway 70 up to Foothill Boulevard. And so following the sidewalks, uh, Caltrans will come in and repave all of Oro Dam with new striping and bike and pedestrian pathways. So, a- as well as, uh, upgraded lighting along that corridor. So that is scheduled for the near future.
Can Dawn hear us?
Answer's my question.
Yes.
Can Dawn hear us? Can I ask, hey Dawn?
I can hear you.
Yeah, um. Is there some kind of schedule for all that work? I mean, how does it happen?
So the city has been working with Caltrans since 2014 on a grant application that was received, um, because there was a, a, a shortfall in staff, that grant application was extended and we're currently back online with it. It's going, undergoing the environmental process now. Um, there's some acquisition of right of way that needs to be completed, that's in process now, uh, so that those, that curb gutter and sidewalk can be installed. And then once the city has completed our portion of the ATP and BTA grant, then Caltrans will come in later and finish the paving portion, which is scheduled to be about 2024, 2025.
So on this table, under the new proposed zone, M2, it says warehousing and wholesaling distribution wouldn't need a use permit?
Uh, that's correct. We can add the UP on there, uh, and that would be automatically then for warehousing come to the planning commission for, uh, for review.
That would be good.
Questions of staff, the applicant's not here, correct?
That's correct.
Are we going to go ahead? I mean, does he have a problem with us going ahead and making a motion and?
They're not here to represent themselves.
I mean, you haven't heard from him.
They, they've certainly been notified of the meeting. Uh, we sent them the links and everything, so, and.
Well, it's up to the commissioners.
They've not called.
If they don't want to be here, then that's fine.
No, I just.
Uh, open the public hearing. Applicant's not here. Any comments from anyone else? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and turn it over to the commission for further discussion and a motion.
It does feel a little bit scary just because.
I'll second that.
The deal's not set and it changes the zoning so much. I wish there was a way to keep it in the zoning it is and just saying we'll allow a warehouse, but I know that isn't the way this works. Instead of opening up to all of these uses.
A- a- and if the deal falls through, then what guarantees? I mean, we have six conditions, but, you know, I mean, we could probably come up with 24 conditions, right? But, I mean, I, like I said earlier, I don't want to see it to what it was, but I don't want to deny something that would work for Oroville.
Yeah.
And you, you, they don't know if they have the contract for whoever wants to use that, is that correct?
That's correct. They do not have an active letter of intent. They are trying to woo this prospect.
And that's the scary part. So if they back out, then what?
Then you have M2 zone.
Yeah, then you have an M2 zone.
Yeah, I'd, I mean, it'd be great if we could have a use permit required on, on any use on that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we'd have a say. But I, I don't know if that's possible or not.
That's.
At least we could have some sort of a say.
Probably overkill, but.
Any new development that is done on the site.
Well, Dawn Kinnell.
Will go to the Development Review Committee as well. So it's not like when it's a permitted use, no one's going to see it and staff just stamps it. It will still go to Development Review Committee for their review of the design, site layout, traffic analysis, things like that before formal approval.
And two commissioners sit on that, so.
And it could be, at that point, if it looked not right, it could be something you could say, can this go to the planning commission or is it something that really can't be stopped? You can just change the.
The zoning administrator has the authority to elevate any project to the planning commission, uh, should, should it look like it might be controversial or, um, more impactful than, than ordinarily would occur, uh, in that, in that zone for that use.
Yeah, I, I see like equipment and machinery sales, you know, if they were selling, you know, used, used logging equipment or something, there wouldn't be too attractive or some solar fields aren't that attractive, um, you know, just.
That's correct. However, uh, this parcel has been sitting there like it is, you know, with these exact same, uh, structures on it for, for decades, so.
As far as the traffic goes, like our CBS in Oroville is right there on Oro Dam. They have tons of just like receiving and shipping trucks that come in and out. I mean, they do have a back road that they can use, but they also travel on Oro Dam. And I would think if this is some sort of like warehouse e-commerce site, that would be similar patterns as far as like deliveries go and pickups. I would see it being like one or two main times of day, like I was saying. I don't think it would be a huge traffic jam if it was that type of business, but I understand the concerns if it was something else. I just want to help put that a bit, put that to rest a little bit.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. I mean, most of your, uh, most of your pickups are done usually at night and your, your shipments are mostly done first thing in the morning, right? And first thing in the morning could be anywhere from five to eight, right? Or even earlier, right? So I, I, I don't know if there'd be a big traffic impact on that. I like the idea of a, uh, cutting out a, a, a turn lane that would go back far enough to, if they started to stacking up, then, you know, it doesn't appease traffic.
There's enough room in the roadway right now to, to do that.
Yeah.
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 And it seems like if the new owners or whoever would be using one of these permitted uses, it all comes down to would they be workable? Cause really, it'd be wonderful to have something flourishing there, bringing in jobs and doing well and take, it would be fantastic. So are we just talking about, I don't know, I kind of feel like the, can we, if the integrity of the people are, you know, as stated, I mean, how much at risk are we to have somebody really come in and just do something horrible?
Well.
Are you saying it's a big risk?
The thing, the one thing brings my comfort level up for the project is what Wes was saying, the zoning administrator has that authority. And when it goes, goes to the DRC and if it's something that's obviously, you know, and we got sharp people on staffs and they can say, this is going to be a problem, so we're going to take it to the planning commission. And, and it goes here. And, uh, so we do have through that mechanism, the ability to anticipate a possible major problem and a mechanism to deal with it. And that's why I'm comfortable with the project.
Okay. Well put.
Yeah, I agree because I sure wouldn't want to stop or hamper anyone from doing anything that is beneficial for Oroville, like this project could and probably will be.
Okay, um, I'll close the public hearing.
There's a roadway right here.
And, uh.
And then there's a roadway right here.
If I hadn't already done that.
Cause there's a light here, but there's no roadway.
Um.
Right? You see what I'm saying?
It's up to the commissioners. Do we want to go ahead and pursue this or do we want to continue it?
I'd like to pursue it.
I suggest we go ahead and either approve it or deny it.
I have, can I ask a question? What, what, um, what defines, uh, you know, significant employer truck traffic? What's the definition of that? I mean, who defines what significant or not significant is?
Usually when there is a, a traffic analysis done, uh, the, uh, the vehicle miles travel is a whole new category, but typically if the level of service or the congestion were to get worse, uh, at, at a certain level, then that typically triggers, uh, lane, lane changes, uh, turnout lanes, signals, that sort of thing. And, and that usually is a function of the traffic analysis. If, if they believe that the, the roadway will be impacted, um, and, and then that will trigger these, these changes.
Is there any current traffic studies now that show how many cars go by? 10,000 a day, 25,000 a day?
Uh, there are 30,000 vehicles per day on Highway 162 right now, um, at the Feather River interchange. We did require a traffic analysis for the Maverick. Uh, we did require one for Hampton Inn. And, uh, so, you know, that's where some, the turn, the right turn lanes and the, the driveways and all of that were worked out with Maverick as part of the whole project decision and project, um, negotiation process. And then Caltrans was involved as well.
So would there be one involved with this parcel?
Caltrans and a traffic study?
Uh, a study, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. And it's, it's all predicated on what their decision is, not Oroville's, but Caltrans because it's 162.
Yeah, Caltrans, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
Okay, I'm still waiting for a motion.
I'm trying to find it. Uh, let's see here. Is this the right one right here? Okay, I'm making motion that Sidon Glass parcel at, uh, 1245 Oro Dam Boulevard re-zoned to an M2 and the General Pan administers and to industry.
And does that assume the conditional overlay that you did?
And the conditional, six conditional.
I guess it is in there.
Yeah.
So, so to clarify, you are moving the staff recommendation. Did you want to include, um, a use permit requirement for warehousing and warehousing and distribution?
Absolutely. And, and the, and the six.
Overlay. The conditional overlay?
The conditional overlay.
Okay.
You have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Do we have a motion and a second and call the roll?
Commissioners, we're going to attempt this again. I think we fixed the voting, so. We are going to.
Thank you.
You think it's going to work?
Yes.
Oh, we got it. There we go.
Motion carries.
We're all green. Anyone want to change their vote?
Thank you, Carl. You, you, what you said earlier.
Yeah, thank you, yeah. Okay.
So this will go before the city council on the 7th of September then with the proposed changes, uh, by the commission.
I think Ron's here. We're ready for, uh, Ron. This is a, uh, not a public hearing item, it's a presentation, so we're ready anytime you are.
He's, I don't, Ron Belser, two.
Good evening.
And welcome to the family.
Lot of interesting stuff I was listening to. It actually is, so. I know a lot about the property you're talking about, so. My uncle was a trust designer at Lost Plumas Lumber for a long time, so. It was interesting to hear. And I don't think the property owner south of there would allow a road to go back through there to get out to South 7th or South 5th.
I don't think so either.
Well, money talks, but, I don't know.
Not unless you had a use that needed it.
Exactly. So I'm here to do a workshop. We're here to talk about, uh, landscape, landscape management, uh, some image about some signing, uh, site security, stuff like that. I was asked by Wes to come and do a presentation. Um, I'm an officer of the Oroville Police Department. I've been in law enforcement for 21 years. I've been overseeing code enforcement for about eight years now. I teach, uh, classes all over California about code enforcement, narcotics, law enforcement, communication classes, everything on the planet. narcotics, law enforcement, communication classes, everything on the planet. So I'm here to do a presentation for you guys and answer some questions. Hopefully, I can answer them when we talk about signage and stuff like that. It gets really, really confusing, so. So landscape, management, maintenance. There's a difference in how we determine, this thing's not working. All right, there's our topics for discussion. So landscape maintenance in various areas of the community, how to handle vacant building monitoring, abandoned houses, abandoning commercial structures, how code enforcement deals with that, some of the teeth that we have in the game that we can force property owners to do to maintain abandoned houses, maintain abandoned commercial properties. Talk about improving signage over on the community. Our signage ordinance is probably one of the most confusing things that I've ever read. I believe it came out of initially, the foundation for it came out of Palm Springs, California. I think that's where they started the signage idea for the city of Orville. My parents owned a gas station in Orville for 60 years and they were constantly battling with the city over signs and signage. And I got kind of familiar with that ordinance. Building site security and impact on economic, the economic structure in our city and how we're going to grow. And then what if any questions you guys have to want to ask of me or anything that you guys can do to make the city better? Okay, maintenance of landscape. So we have ordinances that exist in the city to where people have to maintain their landscape. Overgrown landscape, weeds over 12 inches, minor stuff like that. These are people that do not have landscape management agreements with the city. All new developments should have landscape management agreements. Anytime there's any type of major development done or remodel done, we try to get commercial buildings to agree to landscape management agreements. Residential properties do not fall under any type of landscape management agreement. But we can send notices to people if we get a complaint or if we proactively see landscape that is not in order. And this talks about pruning, fertilizing, repair and replacement of irrigation. We really monitor water. People that, we have issues in our city with homelessness, just like everybody does across the United States. And for some reason, the homeless folks like to tear up sprinklers. They like to go on commercial properties, they go on private properties. For whatever reason, they tear up sprinklers. We've watched countless hours of surveillance when people say, oh, you're picking on the homeless. But you watch surveillance videos of businesses, then you see they'll literally come up, they will knock sprinkler heads off, they'll get into the control modules, take them apart. It's really odd behavior and, but it's a struggle. So we monitor water. We, I'm out real early in the morning and I start my shift at 6:00 AM. So I usually see a lot of the water and it goes on in the commercial area. It's really easy. I have a list of contacts, how to get ahold of property owners versus sending them a letter to say, hey, you got a broken sprinkler, get ahold of your landscape guy. So that works really good. I like to do, you know, as long as we get compliance, I like to talk to people. You know, we don't like to be heavy-handed when it comes to ordinances in the city unless it's necessary. It's good to maintain a relationship with businesses, especially commercial businesses. And it kind of sets the parameters for other businesses that want to come in the city because businesses don't come in the city unless they talk to other people that run business here and they try to get a feel for what's going on and what the city's like. So maintenance agreement, this is a landscape management agreement. And I talked about this is an agreement that is actually recorded with the Butte County. And it's property owners or property managers will agree to maintain their property to a certain standard. A lot of this is done through your guys, the planning commission, when they, the development and our arborist Wade Atterbury, who likes to look at the landscape plans to make sure that everything's adequate, there's enough trees, enough ground cover and irrigation and where that irrigation's going to go. So just to give you an example, the old Walmart that's on Or Dam, now where the Harbor Freight is and Ross and those, we ran into some issues with them about 18 months ago where they just quit maintaining their property. And they had a lot of issues, they had a lot of dead trees on the property. The city came to me and said, hey, can we get ahold of them and make them do something? It took a lot of letters, a lot of fines. They still owe about eight, roughly about $8,000 in fines just to get them on board to get their landscape cleaned up. They haven't added anything new that had died. They actually, I take that back, they added some trees recently. But they did hire a professional landscaper that came in and fixed all their irrigation problems. They started to have sinkhole issues from water leaking underground that was where the pavement was sinking. There was a trash enclosure that was literally sinking into the ground just because of the amount of water that was being wasted. So thus getting in touch with the property owner, the property manager, sending out letters, certified mail, and it takes months to make this happen and staying on top of it, we're able to at least get them to maintain their property now. The only battle we have left with them is the frontage of 162 at 70 to Feather River. They need to put grass or some type of ground cover in that area. But they, it takes that type of work, and that's just one property, to have people maintain, you know, their landscape management agreement. The heavy-handed part of this is if they don't pay their fines and continue not to maintain their property, then we can lien the property. And we did go through a little bit of a lien process with the guy that was involved in property management because he wanted to develop the property where Maverick is now. So we kind of use that as we're not going forward with this until you start cleaning up this because we don't want another mess over at Mavericks. So that worked as far as a negotiation wise, you know, getting some people to put some effort towards their properties. So there are some businesses that we're allowed to develop, but we don't have landscape management agreements with. But we still use our ordinances, you know, about not maintaining landscape to try to get them motivated to make the city look nice. Vacant and abandoned buildings. So it's, in our city, it's unlawful for residential, commercial, industrial or historic be vacant more than 30 days unless the following conditions exist. If it's, I'll just tell you, if it's up for sale, they're developing it and/or they have their own security. But if they don't, they pay a little, I think it's around $300 a year for us to do vacant building monitoring. So the code enforcement guys will go by and inspect their property and make sure that nobody's squatting inside, there's no vandalism, anything like that. If there is, then we notify the property owner. And it's also important that, especially with our vacant residential areas, anything that's boarded up, that they have to board up, the boards are painted to match the building. Any questions?
It's unlawful for it to be vacant. What's the penalty?
So how it starts out is if we find a property owner that is not maintaining a structure that isn't occupied, first thing we send them is a courtesy notice. And they get 10 days to start making changes to the property to secure it properly. It could be anything other than, or likely that the paint needs to be fixed, windows need to be fixed or windows need to be boarded up, roofing needs to be done. They need to develop the property to where it can maintain itself without further damage. So in 10 days, they get an opportunity to start making changes. If they don't, we do a 10-day inspection. When, if nothing has been completed, we send them a 15-day notice of violation. And then they have 15 days to start making changes, whether pulling permits, whatever the case may be. We give them, in code enforcement, if you're going to cite a municipal code, you have to explain to them what you want them to fix. It has to be very clear. You can't just tell them your windows are broken. Now you got to explain that their windows need to be fixed. So you have to explain everything that you want done. After 15 days, if nothing has changed, that'd be a third inspection, then we start citing them. They'll send a citation, the first citation's $100. The next citation's $200, the citation after that's $500, the citation after that's $1,000. So every 30 days, they're being fined $1,000. The one thing in residential properties, if you don't do a title lien or do some type of tax lien, a lien on the property, that if that property changes hands, those fines go away. And that's just case law in the state of California. So if there isn't a lien on the property in which our city, we're working towards being more aggressive about putting liens on properties. We've been too nice in the past that again, if the property changes hands, those fines go away.
With a lien or without a lien?
Without a lien.
Okay.
So we're still dealing with some, you know, the annexation in South Orville. Some of the Butte County cases, there's a person who wants to develop a vacant lot. They want to put a house on it and the county has $50,000 worth of liens on this property. So we're working with the county right now to try to get those liens away because we annexed it, we're responsible for the property. But once something's lien, it just does not go away. It just, it's, yes, sir.
What about the old Ford dealership right there? It's been boarded up for how long?
I'm sorry?
That Ford dealership?
Mm-hmm.
The old one, it's been boarded up like that for a long time?
It can stay boarded up, you know, as long as the property's maintained.
Doesn't really match.
Well, the boards aren't painted.
The plywood.
The plywood's not painted.
So, and so to tell you, there was a time where the plywood was painted, but people have stolen the plywood, people break into the building. But, you know, if we hear about it and a complaint sent to us, we notify the property owner.
And then, all right, there's a few burned out houses around town. I mean, what's the law? I mean, where does health and safety start taking?
So what it takes is the word of a, well, actually, if we get a complaint, right? We make contact with the property owner. We can go out there with a building official and it depends on, you know, if it's a hazardous structure that's accessible by the public, you know, where they can just walk on, it's not fenced off. And they can deem it a hazard. We can do a notice and order and give them 30 days to start filing for permits, either start repairing a structure or demolishing the structure. So what happens is, and we're in the infancy of a program that we just developed where we are getting ready to address multiple houses in the city of Orville now that we got some help, some employees. But notice and orders get sent out. They have 30 days to make something happen. It says in the notice and order, if you don't, the city of Orville will write an inspection warrant. We're going to come on the property. We're going to take care of the, to make the property safe, whatever it may be, whether it be demoing the house, boarding it up, removing all the trash junk and debris, fencing, whatever, you know, it's just based on the condition of the home. And then we lien the property to get our money back. And there is receivership programs out there where individuals can go through the court process, receivership process, when we, when a judge makes a decision that the property owner no longer has interest in the property, that person can purchase the property at fair market value and repay us for our cost for fixing the property or making it safe. So again, we're at the, we've done one location so far. We're at the very beginning stages. We actually work with a legal group that goes through the court and does the paperwork for us. Yeah, there's a lot of those houses out there. It's, when we're addressing it, when we annex South Orville, we took on a lot. So, and we had no people to do it. There was two of us.
No, I know, it's tough. You guys have a tough job ahead of you, I know. It's.
A lot of our time is consumed, you know, with just immediately putting Band-Aids on situations where it'd be an abandoned encampment somewhere. You know, I mean, we do a lot of people loitering, whatever, you know, whatever we can get to quick that the public sees immediately that we hear the most complaints about, and that's what we address, you know? And then we work towards bigger projects.
What about some of the vacant buildings that are downtown that are out of area owners and they've just been closing? I mean, there's a few on Bird and what have you that are just, they got trash in the front, the windows are all dirty, some are cracked, there's spider webs, cobwebs from the sidewalk is messed up where people have used it as a restroom. So, I mean, these out of area owners, I mean, out of sight, out of mind unless.
We contact a lot of out of area owners. So we have a process of being able to find people and it helps being, having a law enforcement background to be able to find people because they hide behind LLCs, they switch properties constantly in different people's names, bank names. I mean, it is pretty interesting how people go to hide from responsibility of their property. But if we receive a complaint, we do address it. And if it's a situation, I can just tell you on a daily basis, we have the City Works program, which is through the Hope Center. On a daily basis, we're going in front of businesses on sidewalks, constantly throwing junk trash debris away. The parks, Dave Goyer runs the City Works guys under my direction and they are there daily. I mean, you would be shocked at the thousands of pounds of junk trash and debris that are abated every day in the city by that group. It's scary.
Impressive.
And a lot of it comes down to people not being responsible for their trash, you know, and they're not having the right trash enclosures or just leaving cardboard and junk trash and debris accessible to people to mill around in the middle of the night and like to collect it and move it from one area to the other. And it's thousands of pounds. They get stuff in places that we don't, we don't even know how they can do it. You couldn't do it with a crane and you're just wondering how they do it, so. Any other questions on that?
Regarding the vacant, abandoned and derelict buildings, we have had an inquiry from ODBA, Orville Downtown Business Association, to find out what can be done to work with property owners. So Ron, you may see this as more of an effort in the downtown to reach out to more owners and get these properties fixed up more quickly.
Signage, so one of the things I was asked to talk about is signage and updating signage. If we get a complaint about signage, that is, we run on a maintenance part of it. We handle the maintenance. If it's dilapidated, falling apart, if it's unsafe, then we'll address it. If we have a sign that is on a pole that's unsafe, that's not something we send letters to. We go out and immediately contact the property owner. If they don't do something about it immediately, within 24 hours, we will. So because we're aware of the liability. So we do have a responsibility to deal with signs and that happens quite a bit. We have signs that get hit by big rigs, we have signs that just fall apart. AMPM West is one of our cases where their sign was falling apart. And I never knew that that giant sign out front, the covering was actually just cloth. People thought stuff was going to fall on their head and stuff, but it's actually a cloth sign. But they're in the process of fixing that. But those are the type of things that we address. We don't involve and tell people to change their sign or tell them to change the font, tell them how high it can be. That is not anything that we would involve ourselves in. Especially if you saw the sign ordinance, you would. I didn't go to Harvard to yell. I do have a bachelor's degree, but I didn't. It would really take that to understand that thing, it's confusing. So every time I try to explain it to somebody that gets called out by the city on their sign, we both end up very confused, so.
Ron, the, there's several buildings in town that have caused some controversy because of their paint color.
Exactly. I love talking about that.
Yeah. I thought that might be of interest to this commission.
Yeah, you know, I mean, and it's, it comes into the development part of it. We really don't, I mean, I have read over paint colors and when people change paint schemes. I really think there needs to be some clarity in our ordinances or a ordinance developed that clearly says if you're going to make. that clearly says if you're going to make a major change in the paint scheme, it needs to be cleared by development. It is really, there's two areas. The one across from the new Starbucks on Olive Highway at Lower Wyandotte. Those type of things, I mean, if you want to attract businesses, you want to attract people into the city, that is not the way to do it. And I'm not putting anybody down for their color choice or anything like that. But aesthetically, it's, it's disturbing when you see some of those businesses. And I know a lot of people that come into the city. I know a lot of developers. And when they see stuff like that, they kind of shy away from our city. They start thinking, man, what are they allowing these guys to do? They just kind of can do whatever they want. And I stay in touch with a lot of people in Elk Grove, Danville, Livermore and those areas. And they're very strict about their paint schemes. And they get people to come into their city, not that we can and not that we aren't. Our city's growing and it's amazing. But I think everybody on whatever scale needs to be held accountable for the condition of the building and how they paint it.
How do you interface with the planning commission when there's a condition that's not being adhered to? You, you bring that yourself?
If I see, yeah, I mean.
I mean, do we notify you, the staff notify you and you do the paperwork to bring it back to us? How does that work?
I don't involve myself in that part. But if they need me to contact a business owner or a property owner that is in violation of ordinance, then that's going to be me and my team. So we're the boots on the ground. We go out and contact people. We send out the notices, take the pictures and, you know, make sure that ordinances are enforced.
How many complaints would you say you get a week? Like, do you want to encourage people to do more or are you overwhelmed?
No, we, we are very overwhelmed, but I would prefer and, and I maintain the same attitude with law enforcement. If squeaky wheel gets to grease, man, I mean, if you're going to call us, we're going to go out and address that. You know, if it's something that somebody has seen, you know, and it's bothersome to them or it's a violation of our ordinance, and someone's willing to come forward and, and fill out a complaint and, and address it, we'll go out and take care of business.
And what about if we complain on something and we don't see it changed in two months and we do it again? Is that the way that works? You just keep?
Yes, and I'd be disappointed if you complained about something that I knew about and, and nothing was taken care of. I mean, I can tell you in two months, we might be fining, fining people at that stage. You might not see change, but they're getting fined. And, you know, our, the cases that we do are confidential. So if somebody ever called us and wanted an update on what was going on, we could just tell them that we're still actively investigating it and, and, you know, taking steps to make it better. We can't give them details.
Would that be better to do that, to call and see and get an update or to just fill out another form? Like, what's the best procedure?
I have like the biggest open door policy. Anybody, I mean, people call me all day long. My cell phone blows up all day, even on my days off. I, I keep myself, I love the city. I was born and raised here. I mean, my family lives here. And, you know, so I take it personal when things don't change. And I can just tell you that the code enforcement department is growing. How big it needs to get, I don't know at this point, but, you know, we have people that work their tail off there. Everybody at City Hall works their tail off, you know, to make the city better.
That's awesome. It's hard to encourage neighbors when they're next door to something that is in violation. It's a hard thing to feel to do a complaint on your neighbor because that's just not intuitive.
People that have lost their life over complaining about their neighbors. So you have to be careful. You have to be very careful, you know? And it's tough to, to show up to someone's house and say, hey, you're living the wrong way. We don't want you living this way. You need to make these changes. But, you know, that's why there's ordinances and that, and that's why city ordinances, the laws with the city can be more stringent than state and federal laws, as long as you're not violating people's civil rights. So.
So what about, so Jerry's Market there on, is that foothill?
Yeah.
And so I guess that, the car went through there about six months ago. So it's still just unpainted plywood. Is he already?
I don't know.
Does he have to fix that or paint that to match the building?
Absolutely. So structurally, it would, it would have to be, I don't know where they're at in the process. And anytime you want me to look at it and I can find out where they're at in that process. And a lot of times it involves insurance, and insurance can take a long time. And I, it, I don't know if it was to the point where we needed a structural engineer to go back in there and say, okay, this was damaged. So you need to fix, you know, this wall or this portion of the ceiling before we remove the plywood and redo the stucco. So, but yes, that will need to be repaired.
Okay. And then that old Chevron gas station from the fifties that's been vacant?
Frank Wright's across the street.
Yeah. What's up with that? Is that a? No, 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 I'm not going to buy it at all. I mean, it'd be nice if it was fixed up, but it just.
I can just.
I guess we have no beautification, no minimum property standards.
Yeah. If we get a, a property complaint about it, we'll, we'll send them a letter.
But what, do you make them do paint it or clean it?
Yeah, you, you know, just maintain the landscape, secure the building. It was being used for storage for, for, at some point. And they were, there was some weekend yard sale, yard sale stuff going on there that was, was shut down. But the, but yeah, we would make them maintain it.
It's my understanding that in an R1 residential area, you can only have six people living in an R1 home.
So this day, this day and age, we're very careful about saying how many people can live in, in a home. I can tell you that there, I, I took on this battle with an apartment that had, the apartment was one bedroom, that fifteen people live in there, and I lost that battle. So it's, um.
And why do you have an R1 zone? I mean, it. So are you saying neighbors should not do complaints or would we do complaints?
I love complaints.
So we would just do those and be the squeaky wheel?
Yes. So if, if, you know, go on the website, fill out a complaint or print one up, fill it out by hand, drop it off at, at City Hall.
Burton and, and that field in the back, it's just been.
So you're calling, you're talking about the eighty-eights off of Long Bar? What they call the eighty-eights, that's county property.
Well, see, county says nope, city, city says nope.
It's county property.
Right? Well.
It's eighty-eight acres and, and it is actually in the county. But we do assist the county. I mean, I have taken.
I've made.
Loaders and forty yard dumpsters and, and went out there and assisted county in, in getting rid of the homeless.
I, I've made complaints to both city and county, and I just get nothing but pushback on that, you know, it's like.
Yeah.
At this point, there's two parcels that are, and I think that one is also in escrow, the eighty acres. There's an eighty acre, there's a eighty or five acre, fourteen acre. They're all, I think.
The homeless folks, they call it the eighty-eights. So.
Yeah, well, I, I don't think it was last year. It was the year before. We had four fires out there.
And it's scary. I mean, it, it is very scary. I've walked that property many times. I've went out and, and arrested people off that property many times.
But you walked it with, when, I don't know if you remember this, a homeless stole one of my barber bag tables. Remember that?
Yeah, I went out and found, yeah. I'll go anywhere to get anybody's property back.
It was, it was just my plan table when I was building the deck, right? And I was thinking, you know.
And some things are a matter of principle.
Yeah, exactly. But, yeah. Yeah, you do a great job. I know I called a lot when I owned the cleaners. That was just.
That's a, that's a constant challenge, and, and we're not the only city being challenged. And, and we have to be very careful about what we do and how we do it, and we have to do it professionally and, and, you know. We do not want, we live in litigious society. We do not want to draw the element of that here in our city when we're dealing with homelessness. And, and we, and we do offer anything and everything we can. I run the behavioral health program where I have behavioral health people go out with me when we talk to homeless folks and, and try to give them benefits. I've gotten countless people off of the street in the housing, you know, people that had social security that have went bad and, and working with behavioral health, getting their driver's license back, getting their social security back in order and getting them into housing. And it's tough. And I'll tell you the toughest thing that is going on right now in our city, and it's not uncommon in every city, is people busing folks up here via the Greyhound or dropping them off, Ubering them up here, whatever the case may be. San Francisco, Sacramento, Shasta County. I can go out in the morning and, and I know immediately when a, a bus load has been dropped off here. I'm, I see brand new faces with brand new problems and, you know, make contact with them, talk to them. They're from the Bay Area, you know, they've got a bus ticket up to Orville, you know, or they get a bus ticket to Chico. You know, it's, it's a shuffle and shell game. And a city isn't going to spend money on someone that, that is toeing the line and doing the right thing. They send the worst of the worst up here. And, you know, it's, it's tough. It is, it is. And nothing against a bus or anybody that owns a busing system or a Greyhound, but I wish that didn't exist. So, in our city at least. And I've tried to fight that before, and that's not something I can fight. So. Because it is an avenue to get homeless out of the city and get rid of their problems and, and bring it up to our area. And not just Orville. I mean, I know Chico, Gridley and, and Marysville get their share. It's tough. You know, unless you're out there on the street every day talking to these guys, you don't realize. It's less than thirty percent of the people I talk to are not from Buke, are, are from Buke County. So it's weird when you think about it. Okay, now after that depressing conversation, we'll talk more. In signage, we talk about like materials. We'll have businesses that will build these giant A-frames, put them in the bed of a pickup truck and park it in front of their business. That type of stuff we don't allow. And, I mean, we deal with it on a regular basis. So we'll contact those folks and, and they obviously don't meet the signage requirements, and they have to take that type of stuff down. But improving signs, anytime we see anything over five years, has to be redeveloped if it's showing wear, you know. And we get, especially if we get a complaint about it, and we drive around all day long, we see stuff and, and we send letters all day long to people to keep their sign up, to keep their buildings up. The broken windows that happened on Meyer Street. And it's, it's tough having a business because you do have a lot of folks that run around and like to smash out windows. But those still need to be maintained. Okay, so vacant abandoned buildings and building structures, and talk about that real quick. When it becomes a public nuisance, that's something that we give immediate attention to. We won't do a courtesy notice. So I go to a lot of houses in downtown Orville, South Orville, even out in Thermalito, that people that have substance abuse issues use as a place to squat. In the wintertime, that's where the fires come from. They'll be in there running lanterns, wall heaters if there's electricity, and those houses will burn down. Those things are something that we give immediate attention to, that we do summary abate. So if we have to get an inspection warrant, we will. We'll go on the property. We'll spend the money ourselves to board it up and then do cost recovery through the property owner. Do you guys have any questions all about vacant buildings or any more questions at all?
No.
Okay. And a lot of times, I mean, we, we'll be so focused on one area of the city that we won't re-realize them what's going on. So we love, like I say, we love to get complaints. We like to hear from people. And they're not really, to me, I don't like to call them complaints because it's not somebody complaining. It's just somebody holding somebody accountable for what they're supposed to be doing. And then we'll talk about economic. I, I will just tell you that dealing with COVID on the code enforcement end, and every time you send out a letter to try to get somebody to do something, it was, you know, we can't because of COVID. We can't hire somebody because of COVID. We are moving out of that, you know, might be moving back in it, I don't know. But we're moving out of that right now very carefully. As far as our city goes, and especially the downtown area, I think that there are some really impressive improvements going on. And it's, it's really, really nice to see. And I can just tell you, based on some of the developments that's went on there and the remodeling, and I have a friend that owns several buildings down on Huntune and Montgomery, and he's been developing them and, and remodeling them like crazy. And when people see that happening, they like to fix up their building too, and it kind of spreads. And I, I noticed that in neighborhoods too, when you make a, a house, start cleaning up their yard. Or we start, we tow a ton of cars, and I haven't even begun to talk about that. But make them fix up their house. Other neighbors see that and it, and it kind of energizes them to make their house nice too. So that's the kind of the important thing with code enforcement. One of our biggest issues outside of abandoned buildings and, and houses are people that dump cars. And there is no, there isn't a lot of money. If you watch the, the metals industry and you watch the market, and you'll note when we have barges sitting out in the ocean outside of China, when China's not wanting any of our scrap metal, you'll see people start dumping cars all over the city. I can begin to tell you how many we tow anywhere from five to sometimes ten cars a day that are dumped in our city. And it is a constant problem. We do it through the abandoned vehicle abatement program, which our cost, our time and our effort is repaid through that program. So it doesn't cost the city any money. It, it cleans up the city, makes it nice. But it is a, I mean, I could run two people seven days a week, twelve hours a day, and never catch up on the cars that need to be towed. And all you do is drive around and you see them. I mean, we'll clean up the street and then give it a month and there'll be cars dumped there. So it's a, it's a real issue. And when the market turns, changes around and scrap metal prices go up, you won't see a dump vehicle anywhere. People will be taken to the recyclers and they get money for them. But right now, they're not. Does anybody else have any questions? Anything I can answer? Okay. I can't help you there.
What, what can the? The sign over there at the, the Big Lots is and the ninety-nine cent store? The smoke shop over there, is the sign painted on?
Are you talking about on their west wall? Or are you talking on top? The west wall is painted on. And then.
Is that the sign ordinance? They can just paint the name where there's, where it says Smoke Shop?
If you look at the sign ordinance, and I, I don't, the sign ordinance scares me. I mean, I have, I have nightmares about it at nighttime.
Oh, my goodness.
But there is, I mean, it, it would fit. It just depends.
It, it, what would fit? That they just painted it on?
You can paint, if it, if it is aesthetically pleasing to the eye, the right size, the font is the right size.
Didn't they just redo the sign ordinance not too long ago?
I'm not sure. How long ago they renewed it?
Yes.
Okay. And that was approved to be able to paint your, your name on there?
Um, that, I can't say off the top of my head. It is a very thick ordinance revision, but it was fully adopted and approved by council in June of this year. So thirty days final adoption for publication, and we have a new one.
I didn't know that that was approved sign.
I'm not saying if it is or isn't at this point, but, and now you're going to make me go over there and look at it. Because we deal with that business quite a bit. They love putting banners inside their windows.
Oh, my God.
They like it. We do not like going to a business, especially law enforcement, that we can't see inside of. And it's scary.
The mattress placed next door and.
Yes, that's a constant battle as well.
The broken window with the other one down, down there, the vacant, that owner does, doesn't keep that, that center up at all.
Yeah, we have an active case there with the, we were, I mean, it did help a lot when we had him put the gates to where people couldn't access the back of it. But then they went off of Myers and they traveled westbound, and they just destroyed his entire chain link fence to get in back there. I, I go through there every morning at six AM, you know, and run people out. But they're, they are responsive. When we tell them, hey, there's graffiti back there, there's trash back there. They go back and abate the graffiti. The trash will be gone. The problem, it's just a, a cycle. It's just a recurring cycle.
So other than filing complaints and conditioning projects, what can the planning commission do to help code enforcement? Is it like the regulatory problems, just stay out of your way or, or?
We like to hear.
What can the planning commission do?
Yeah, so we like to hear. I mean, I, I love to hear from, I'd love to hear from the planning commission. And anything you guys see that, that bothers you or you don't think is, is aesthetically okay, I want to hear about it.
Through a paper? Just fill out the same paper?
I'll complain. You can send me an email.
Okay.
Okay.
And, you know, I believe on my cards at City Hall and my email is accessible on the website, because I get emails from people all over the place, so. I am reachable, and anybody wants to go, Monday through Thursday, six in the morning till 4:00 PM, you can come by and talk to me. Tell me, hey, you know, this is going on, that's going on. And if I'm not in my office, which I'm rarely in my office, somebody at the office will call me and say, come to City Hall if somebody wants to talk to you.
Planning staff works across the hall from code enforcement, and we do talk to code enforcement about the issues that you folks bring up as well, and they are responsive. So, that's another avenue.
And right now, there's a senior code enforcement officer. We have two new code enforcement techs who've been here less than a month, and then we're slated to hire four more people. So, yeah, so it'll be really, I mean, I say, we're the infancy of a really, an opportunity to run a really cool program and make some changes in the city. So, when I first started in law enforcement, everything was about going out and arresting people. It's different now. Now, everybody wants the city to look nice, they want it to look clean, you know, it's just a different attitude and it's actually nice to see, so. Yeah, unless you got another question.
Have you got another question? Well, thank you very much.
Yeah, that was awesome. Thank you. Really appreciate it.
And reach out to me, seriously.
Well, we will. You might be sorry.
Sometimes I may be in a bad mood, but I'm never in a bad mood.
It's true. Thank you.
Okay, Tom.
Okay.
Has anybody been to take a break?
I just did.
Well, I saw that.
I couldn't wait.
Okay, well, let's just keep going.
Here we go.
Hey, um... No wonder I can't see anything, I don't have my glasses.
Zoning Code 21-03, Mobile Manufactured Home Code Amendments, staff?
Yes, so this is a draft amendment to our municipal code, Chapter 15.36, relating to mobile and manufactured home installation requirements. Currently, our code as written is broad and does not specifically require certain design and installation criteria otherwise required of conventional single-family residences within the city, as well as other jurisdictions when it comes to manufactured homes. Staff, we often receive inquiries regarding installing manufactured homes within the city, what's required, what can I do, what can't I do. And it can become difficult responding to those inquiries when our code as written only says they must appear as blending in with the neighborhood. So, we researched other jurisdictions, specifically the Town of Paradise, City of Biggs, County of Butte, City of Rockland, and City of Santa Rosa, as well as looked into state law, Government Code 65852.3, which allows cities to adopt regulations of manufactured homes relating to architectural requirements, age limitations, materials, other development standards that are otherwise required of conventional single-family dwelling units. Key changes to note, in the revised code, we did add manufactured homes, just for clarity. Currently, it only talks about mobile homes. Our code defines both differently, as well as HUD. Manufactured homes are those built after 1976. The term is used interchangeably when referring to manufactured homes, people call them mobile homes, but just to ensure that all structures are being held to these standards, we did add manufactured home. Age limits, we did add the maximum ten-year age limitation from date of manufacture. That is similar to what the Town of Paradise, City of Biggs, and County of Butte do. Currently, we allow manufactured homes of any age to be installed within the city as long as if they are certified by HUD or HCD. So, this would set a ten-year age limit from the date of manufacture to install. So, 2010, manufactured home was built, 2020 was the cutoff date for install. That's how that ten-year window works. And then last key change would be the design criteria. So, we included specifics of roof pitch, three-over-twelve siding materials, skirting, things like that. That allows applicants and staff more clarity when reviewing applications and submitting for manufactured homes. So, the draft code is included in the, in your packet. Changes are in red and then striked through of what was removed. The DRC did review this on July 8th. They were supportive of these changes and staff recommends, recommending to city council approval of these code changes.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing, in case the public has anything to contribute. I don't see, have any, nobody on the, okay. Seeing then, we'll close the public hearing and turn it over to the planning commission for discussion.
I like the changes. I think they're great. I think it's needed.
Does everybody have a chance to really review this? Okay, good. I think it's something that's been needed for some time, obviously.
Yep.
No discussion, I'm ready for a motion. It's a recommendation to the city council.
There, I don't make a recommendation for ZC 21-03, Mobile Manufactured Home Code Amendments, be adopted as written. Is that it? Is it acceptable?
All right. We have a motion and a second. Are we back on the list? Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. I think we're through most of the agenda, except for, uh... I don't know if, reports, discussions, correspondence by the planning commission, staff reports. Where's the thing about the, uh... You don't have anything for the chair to, usually have an item, but I don't see anything.
Item nine at the bottom of page four is staff reports.
Is that staff reports?
Item eight is commissioner reports.
Got anything for us?
Of course. So, I'd like to report that the council, city council, has approved the appeal ordinance that this commission forwarded to them. They deleted the phrase, the section in there that the commission added, allowing the planning commission up to twenty minutes to present their case, to balance out the applicant's twenty minutes. So, they deleted that, and so the planning commission just must use the force of its own personality rather than rely on the code in order to get its case presented to the city council. They approved the second reading of that, and so that will become law very shortly.
That is nice of them.
The upcoming council agenda on the seventh will include two items. One is this manufacturing home ordinance that you just recommended to go forward.
That'll go on the 21st.
It will go on the 21st, all right. That's right, we did discuss that. And the other is the side and glance appeal item, which we will move to the city council for the first reading and for discussion on September 7th. We have hired a company called Housing Tools out of Chico to update the general plan housing element, and Connie, who was in here just a few minutes ago, is managing that project. That housing element by state law must be submitted to HCD by July 15th of next year.
Every two years, isn't it? You have to submit one every, or change every, or update every two years?
I think it's every five years, the housing element, but they have to put in annual updates.
Oh, there you go. It's annual.
So, there is something called the sixth cycle, and we have new housing allocation numbers for various income groups, low income, very low income, moderate income, and market-rate housing, and so we have to revise our housing plan and show the state how we're going to meet those goals. The owner of the old seven-acre Martin Ranch project, the Humong community, we have determined with them that they're going to proceed with an annexation process to annex the hundred acres north of that, just outside the city limits, and make it into one single project. So, more on the annexation there. By the way, the housing element must come here to the planning commission for recommendation to go to council. We also have been informed by our city attorney that we can do a sole-source procurement for updating our general plan circulation, traffic element, our greenhouse gas emissions inventory, and proceed with a vehicle miles traveled analysis in order to avoid an EIR for every new housing project that would create over ten housing units. So, that is in the works, and that'll be going on for several months. We have the DRC meeting planned for September 9th, which Glenn will chair and Natalie will attend. We have two items so far on that. One is an oversized garage on Brookdale, and one is a use permit for three portable classrooms at the father's house on Fort Wayne in Southside. Lastly, you won't see Connor in person anymore for another year. This is his last planning commission meeting next week, is his last week, and he goes to UC Irvine for the next year. You will be seeing him via Zoom and in other ways, because he will be working remotely for us a couple of days a week in order to keep our capacity up. So, we thank you very much for that, Connor. I don't know if Dawn has anything to add?
Only that we have been interviewing some planning applicants and hoping to add to our planning staff in the near future.
That's great.
Whatever happened with the, and they may have discussed this last week, I wasn't here, but with the storefront that applied for the alcohol license on the corner of Montgomery and Feather River?
The Montgaleys, they are... Still slowly working on it. They are still working on some of their parking lot improvements, things like that. The owner has been out of the area for a while, so we did see them recently, so it looks like they're getting back to working on it.
Did they appeal our decision and take it to the...
Yes, they did appeal, and city council did approve their appeal, so the use permit for alcohol sales was approved.
Okay.
I always like to hear what the current status is of the project. I never can remember the name of it, there, Montgomery and...
The Gateway?
Is it the Gateway? Why can't I remember Gateway?
It's the gateway to downtown.
Yeah.
Is that the twelve?
Did that come back to the city? I know when it was originally approved, they were put up a hundred thousand dollar bond or something, and if they didn't perform, it was going to come back to the city? Has it done that, or...
Oh, that's the twelve acres at the, at the...
At their intersection, yeah.
The intersection. That developer is no longer involved in the planning process. The city has listened to and seen an initial concept by Mark Mendez, who is a local developer and property owner, to develop that property, and I don't believe there's been any further decisions made about it. And Dawn, I don't know if you want to weigh in on that.
There's currently a development agreement under review and negotiation by staff and Mr. Mendez to later be presented to council, should the agreement be made.
Just north of Mavericks, is there a development there? I see a paved driveway extending into the parcel.
That paved driveway is a temporary access to Maverick, which was developed because Caltrans did not issue or refused to issue an encroachment permit for the existing driveway that's on Orodam Boulevard. We believe, we've heard that they've now worked it out with Caltrans so that they can open that exit-only, right-turn-only driveway onto Orodam Boulevard, and then use their normal entrance that this commission approved. But until then, in the interim, they are going to be using that temporarily paved driveway into the site.
Sorry, long day. I have a couple issues, paint and plaques. Painting, I've had a number of people in downtown talk to me about why don't we have a paint ordinance or approved palettes? And I've spoken with a few of the buildings that are not painted appropriate colors, and they've had to take criticism, and they're confused, and I think it's just generally not a good idea to not have something on the books and have people kind of be attacked when they choose the wrong color, and they think they've chosen a wonderful color. So, I just feel like, what would our steps be, and would we, would this planning commission be open to pursuing, especially for the historic district, some color palettes, or just somehow making sure this doesn't happen again? Can we get clarity, or what can we do?
We heard Ron Belser just say the same thing, that he would like to see a paint ordinance, because it was a little amorphous here. So, the planning commission can certainly direct staff to develop a new paint ordinance. If not, staff will take it upon themselves to develop a new paint ordinance and bring it to you folks.
I think that would be wonderful, just because I, how hurt and confused people get when they're being attacked for their color choice that they think is wonderful. And of course, it would make town look better. Okay, that's wonderful. And then my second item that people have brought to my attention, quite a few big developers in town, actually, and one of them actually served on the Historic Advisory Committee. Can we pursue or look into getting some type of plaque to honor buildings of note and buildings that are well-cared-for and set an example for the type of care that we would like to see? and set an example for the type of care that we would like to see, especially in our historic district? I'm thinking that it doesn't have, just how do we go about exploring that? And maybe getting a budget for it. It doesn't have to be millions of plaques. I mean, you could literally just give a few plaques out a year, but something that would encourage a standard of development and care.
Do you mean like an award?
Kind of like, well, almost like a medal of note. Like I think Grass Valley has something, a home of note, or commendation. Or I think there's a million different ways to do it, but something that the city of Oroville, especially in the historic district, is recognizing this building as meeting high standards. I mean, there's so much there that we could do. I'm just wondering, how do we start? And can we start doing that?
Something that can be done is our Arts Commission has an award for your voice for the arts. The, there's the Sam Norris Award. The Historic Advisory Committee could develop an award for, or recognition award for buildings that display, as you're saying, that are well taken care of and display the attributes that we like to see within our historic downtown. So that's something that we can bring back as a possibility to kind of build this award, but also take it to the council so that we get their buy-in on it as well.
That sounds wonderful. So maybe could we set as a goal by the next meeting, we can all kind of independently check and see, or just kind of come up with some ideas of what do we want to see on this list of standards? And maybe what other jurisdictions are doing with their awards? And try to kind of get the ball rolling.
Yeah, I think that's something that can be done. Communities like Benicia, I believe, have done awards like this in the past.
Yeah, I was watching, I mean, I was just watching this favorite gardening show that I watch. It's in Oklahoma in historic district. And on her home is just this really neat-looking plaque, just very specific to this unique neighborhood. And Oroville is an incredible historic district. It would just be, I think it would really be something that would head in the direction of encouraging the kind of care that we want to see in the city.
Okay, yeah, we can put something together for this next planning commission meeting.
Okay. Thank you. And I'll research and get ideas.
That sounds good. Thank you.
Is there anything else that anyone wants to bring up for discussion? Staff, you got everything? Okay, I'll close the meeting. Next meeting is September 23rd, 6:00 PM.
It's the end of the year pretty soon. Damn near the end of the year.